At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to offer a moment of silence. Amen. All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no degree of justice or wrong.
At this time, we'll move to the public comments portion of our meeting. We have two individuals sign up for public comment. At this time, I want to remind everybody we have three minutes each for public comment, and that public comment shall not interfere with our duly meetings and cannot also mention employees by name, litigation, student retchers, or any other confidential matters that may be discussed in closed session. So this time, I would like to invite Ms. Hayes-Halls.
Ms. Halls, you'll have three minutes, and I'll keep the time for you. Thank you.
I'm here to discuss that the fact that I don't feel like my child was provided a safe environment at school. She's been bullied since September the 18th, the second week of school. I've been to the school several times. I've been to the central office, email central office about this bullying situation. It's never been taken care of. She's been hit, kicked, slapped, and she didn't engage in behavior back, just allowed it to happen because she didn't want to get in school, get in trouble, because she was told if she engages back that she will be placed in alternative school. So the last incident, she was pushed down and hit, and I guess after being pushed down and hit that time, she got back up to defend herself. And first, she was given four days out of school for the altercation. Then the principal decided that that wasn't good enough for her and gave her 10 days out of school with placement at alternative school. And now she is going, I don't feel that she's going to be safe. If she wasn't safe in school, not been in the same classroom with the bully, she's not going to be safe sending her to an alternative school, putting her in the same classroom with the bully. And has been told that if the student jumps on her again, she's just to stay there and let the student beat her until the teacher break it up. If a teacher don't break it up, and she defends herself, then she will be suspended from Brackstreet again. She'll be suspended from Brackstreet. But, I mean, she did that three, three or four times, allowing the student to kick her, hit her, different occasions throughout the school year. Nothing was done. So the last time, when she did engage back, she was put at Brackstreet. Now she's going to be in the same classroom with that bully. And I don't know anything else to do. I went to the principal several times, and like I said, I went to central office about this, and it hasn't been taken care of. And I just don't feel like she's going to be safe. She was, it was causing her issues, difficulty breathing, panic attacks, anxiety attacks, and difficult having to increase her medication because of the anxiety and stuff, and as far as causing issues with her asthma. So it's just hasn't been a good thing, or she's scared to go to school because she's scared that she'd have to stand there and get beat up or get suspended for defending herself. And teachers are not going to break it up, because in the video, the teachers are standing there on the wall doing nothing, but she's suspended for defending herself, while the teachers stand there with their arms crossed, not trying to stop it. Then she's drugged by her hair around the school. She's still getting harassed by the same student. The student's family and friends are probably-
Ms. Halls, that's time. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Charlie or Patricia, either one.
My name is Patricia Halls, and my concern is that my granddaughter, I had gone to the school, and I spoke with the principal concerning about them. My granddaughter come in contact with this girl that's been bullying her, and that I didn't want them to come to be near each other because of something might will happen. And when I was told, when I was called to pick her up, and I was told that she was going to be moved on a hall where these, this child will be, and I told her that my concern was that them come in contact with each other and they get into some kind of fight, and that she would get hurt. And I was promised that this wouldn't happen, they would make sure that she would be protected from this. And then I was called back to the school to come and pick her up, because this girl had jumped on her, had hit her, pulled her hair, and she was all upset when I got there, crying, says, "Grandmother, I told you I didn't want to go near this child. I told you what she would do to me, and she would beat me up, and she would do this to me if I go near her, and that's the reason why I didn't go on that side." And then I asked the principal to please do not move her where this child will be at. And she told me that was her decision, and that's what she was going to do. And if I didn't like it, then I can go speak to Dr. Walker at the Board of Education. So that's my concern, because we pleaded, I pleaded to her not to put my granddaughter and not to change her where this child will be, because she's been threatening her. And the statement that the principal gave was a statement actually that the other child was making, and she feels that that was a statement that she should not, that my grandchild made, but it wasn't the statement my grandchild made, it was a statement the other child made. So my concern is her safety.
Thank you. At this time, that completes our public comments. Moving into our vision and policy for school board, school board members.
Mr. Chairman, Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. And our code of ethics.
The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the Board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board, excuse me, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misinterpretation of or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina Board Associations.
Thank you. At this time, moving on to our agenda, we do have one addition we need to add. You have that before you. There are here a motion to add the suggested motion that was just handed out to you concerning the purchase of laptops.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add this to our agenda.
Under new business?
Under new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amended, amended agenda, same saying aye?
Aye.
Are they opposed? Thank you. Agenda stands approved. At this time, I will need a motion for approval of our regular board meeting minutes on 2/11/2020, and the called board meeting on 3/9/2020.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular called board meeting on 2/11, and the called board meeting on 3/9.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, same saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes stand approved. Thank you. Moving right along. As Chairman of the Lee County Board of Education, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the past few days. As a nation and as a school district, we're facing a reality that none of us imagined just a week or two ago. But what I have observed in our staff over the past 48 to 72 hours have given me much hope and pride for Lee County Schools. We've had staff working around the clock on the weekends to make sure that our precious resource, our children, are taken care of. We're providing ways for students to continue their learning, whether it's through online resources, reading a book through Facebook Live, or through other materials that will be passed out. We will be providing meals for children who otherwise would go without. We have adults checking in with children who are vulnerable and need an extra attention to ensure their will, to ensure their well-being during this difficult time continues. And this is just part of what we're doing. As long as we're in the crisis situation, oh, excuse me, as how long we're in the situation remains to be seen. I pray that we return to school at the end of the governor's initial order on March 30th. But if we don't, I'm confident that our staff will continue to be selfless, as they are every single day, and will work to make sure our children are cared for as possible as they can be. Until they can, we'll give them hugs and high fives on the way back to the classroom then. On behalf of the entire Board, I say thank you. You're heroes, and we're proud of that you're a part of the Lee County Schools team. I don't think it's a shock to anybody that we're in unprecedented times. We are working with many different agencies throughout the county. We are working hard with our federal and state administrators as well. This, this crisis is changing from hour by hour, minute by minute. We are doing our best to get the information out as quickly and correctly as we can, and I can't thank enough for the senior staff, the crisis team, and everyone that's been involved in this process. I spoke to several people today who were asking questions, and I said, "I promise you tonight, you're going to have information overload, because we're going to, we're going to roll out several different things tonight that are going to hopefully get us through this process and this crisis." Again, I can't thank the, the staff enough, I can't thank the Board enough, and I can't thank our agencies that are working with us enough for how we're handling this crisis at this time. At that point, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Andy Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report tonight is about dealing with these, this crisis, and, and a little bit of a recap of the last week, which has been a very tumultuous week, and also moving forward in our plans to support our, our students, staff, parents, and community. Just to recap for everyone, last week, there was obviously a lot of movement within the state regarding cancellations of activities and events. We were no different than a lot of other folks. Last Tuesday afternoon, we canceled all field trips going out of county, heading anywhere in the state. And, and then from there, monitored situation, and we had already, we'd already pulled together our crisis team several weeks ago with the possibility of this issue with the coronavirus, and had started making plans at that point several weeks ago. As the week went on, the North Carolina High School Association canceled all athletic activities, and at that point, we, in following suit with what the North Carolina High School Association had required, we also canceled after-school activities, restricted visitors to school, and put in place several other items to, to help protect the safety of our students, staff, and faculty. Over the weekend, the governor closed schools within the state of North Carolina, and from there, we were directed to not only provide optional workdays for faculty and staff, but also to begin preparing students for instruction, also beginning to put together a plan for feeding and supporting as we could for childcare as necessary if that crisis arose for healthcare officials. During this week, we have tried to fulfill all of those goals. My, my task tonight is to explain what those things are, and also try to provide some guidance on how we are supporting all of the folks who've been affected by this. To begin with, as we have gone through the week, obviously, one of the most important things for us is supporting our, our children at this time. And we are announcing tonight the formation of Lee County Schools Child Nutrition Hubs. Lee County Schools will be providing free lunch for children ages 1 through 18 years of age, which will be available for pickup beginning Friday, March 20th. Pickup will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and we're beginning that on Friday, as I noted. We will also do that next week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, with the opportunity possibly for expansion of those days. All sites, which I will name in just a few moments, are drive-through or walk-up only. We have Mary Holly Oates, our Director of Nursing, has worked closely with the Health Department, and Amanda Cagle, our Director of Nutrition, to make sure that we find all appropriate health guidelines in relation to that. And for parents and caregivers, multiple meals may be picked up at those sites. Pickup locations will be Brackstreet Academy, East Lee Middle School, Greenwood Elementary School, San Lee Middle School, Warren Williams Elementary Alternative School, and W.B. Wickar Elementary School. Those are sites to serve the entire county. Those sites and some of the parameters might change as we go through serving students, because we want to make sure that we do the best job that we can and work to make sure we have a very efficient system in place to serve students. All recipients, as part of this program, should be prepared to drive up or walk up to the designated area and let staff know how many meals they needed, as I said before. It's very important, no space will be provided for onsite dining. This is strictly a drive-through activity for our students and their parents. We, we have a sheet with that information on it that we can, we can provide as needed. So that is, that is one piece of the task I believe we were given by the state, and what we are trying to do is support our community. We also are looking at, looking at providing instruction for students. As Chairman Kelly said previously, the governor closed schools for two weeks. However, we, we have taken the next step in that in trying to plan beyond two weeks to, with the understanding that two weeks probably is not going to be enough time for this. So we have created a laptop distribution program that will begin next Monday. Lee County Schools will provide laptops to students in grades 3 through 12 who need devices to continue their learning during school closures. The laptop distribution program is intended for families without a device that allows access to the internet. All lessons and activities provided by Lee County Schools can be accessed from a smartphone or computer. Lee County Schools is finalizing a website that will provide remediation and enrichment activities for students, and is, we are also developing internet hotspots at various locations where students can access information with the laptops that are provided. We are about ready, as we did, I believe we, well, I know we started this yesterday, with, we'll be sending out Blackboard Connect calls and posts on the district websites, on social media, which we've already started doing. The distribution schedule is as follows. Monday, March 23rd, distribution sites and times, Southern Lee High School for Southern Lee High School students, 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. for juniors and seniors, 9:30 to 10:00 a.m. for all others. Also, Monday, March 23rd, Lee County High School, which will be for Lee County High School students and Brackstreet Academy students, 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. for juniors and seniors, 9:30 to 10:00 a.m. for all others. East Lee Middle School, San Lee Middle School, and Wesley Middle School students may pick up laptops at their home school from noon to 1:00 p.m. on March 20, Monday, March 23rd. Tuesday, March 24th, distribution sites and times. Greenwood Elementary School, Greenwood and J. Kland Edwards Elementary School students from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. B.T. Bullock Elementary School on the 24th, Tuesday, Bullock and Deeper Elementary School students from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Broadway Elementary School students, Broadway students only, noon to 1:00 p.m. And W.B. Wickar Elementary School, W.B. Wickar Ingram and Tramway Elementary students from noon to 1:00 p.m. Important information for everyone regarding laptop pickup. Curbside distribution will take place at the front of each school. Only adults who are listed as a contact for a student in power school may pick up a laptop. One form of photo ID will be required. An acceptable use policy form will be provided and must be signed upon receipt of the laptop. As part of our program to support laptop distribution and online learning, we have done two things, well, several things actually that contribute to that. Our, our teachers actually started last week putting together packets and information for, for teach, for students that was handed out. Much of that material got handed out at the end of last week. We have some still that we will continue, we will find a way to deliver to students so they can have access to that. More importantly, we also started in our curriculum instruction under the guidance of Dr. Chris Dawsonback and also Patricia Cauldron, started putting together what we call a LCS Curriculum Boosters page, which will be live next week when the laptops are distributed. Just to give you a little bit of information of what that is, is a pre-K-12 system, which will have a menu of options at each grade level and our core subject levels where students can access work, lessons, and important things that they need to know. We've also created an AP page that supports that, where various courses that students are currently enrolled in, they can continue their education with AP education. We've also, on that boosters page, curriculum page, provided a number of resources for students that they can access for free. It's very important for us that, that they access those things and continue their education. Also, Patricia Cauldron has been working with our instructional technology facilitators to provide training, both in video and direct instruction, professional development regarding Google Meets, which allows teachers to connect with students at home via laptops. We know that several teachers in the last two days have already done that and have had a great time working with their students to try to keep them up to speed and instructionally engaged. Just to read a little bit of what will be on the website, it's, and this is a little bit of a welcome that we have there. Welcome to our Curriculum Boosters website for Lee County Schools. In collaboration with teachers throughout the district, this remote learning opportunity was developed to provide students and families access to quality learning experiences in the event of a school closure. The coursework on this site may be used to supplement assignments provided by individual teachers through various digital platforms, such as Canvas, Google Classroom, or students' LCS Gmail account. This does not take place of assignments, activities provided by individual teachers for their students. These materials are meant to deepen a child's understanding and prepare them for return to traditional learning. Some best practices to consider during virtual learning are: complete assignments and/or activities provided by your child's teacher prior to any activities on this page; develop a consistent schedule for your child to follow that closely aligns to their traditional school schedule; individual assignments and/or activities on this site are intended to be completed in 20 to 30 minutes. If more time is needed, we encourage breaks every 30 to 40 minutes. We have tried to put together a, a comprehensive site that by Monday will contain in each subject area, grade level, two weeks of lessons that will support our students. Our teachers are working furiously to continue to fill out that page and also provide other assignments for students. It is a work in progress that has gotten off to a great start, and we believe will grow even more. On the other side of things, as you know, when things like this happen, it is ever-changing, and I can't tell you how many times I have said to someone with a great deal of fact that this changes every hour. It changes every hour on the hour, and sometimes more than once. I cannot say enough about our senior staff and the people who've jumped in to support this endeavor, our principals, our teachers, community members, parents, all rallying around the idea that we should support our students and our schools and our community, and at the same time, take the necessary steps to protect our community from a health perspective, which is critically important at this time. I cannot say enough about our senior staff, Sharon Spence, Chris Dawsonback, John Conway, Chris McNeil, Reece Cagle, Johnny Waller, Kelly Jones, Mary Holly Oates, Rebel, Rebecca, Missamore, Technology Staff, ITFs, so many people that have been involved with this, that have come together to make this work. We have much more work to do. And I believe that we will do what we need to do to support our students and staff and community. It will take a great deal of work. It's going to take a great deal of people working together, but I believe that we will do that, and we will deal with what is coming in the days ahead. Any questions? And please, I'd like to recognize Patricia Cauldron as well with all of her hard work for the video professional development and support and, and all the CNN staff. Questions for me?
Can y'all hear me there? Dr. Bryan, I'm sure the community and, and myself as well appreciates the staff and all the hard work of removing these barriers that we have, especially in this hard time. Going out today to feed some of the children when they run up to you and ask, "Hey, is my grandma going to die? Is this going to happen?" I mean, it, it just touches your heart and so on. I know this is an extremely difficult time, and I appreciate everything that you guys have already done. Some, one of the, a couple of questions that came up, and it may be something, like you said, it changes every hour on the hour, but one of the questions I have is in reference to the DPI and the state. Have they come back to, or, or do we need to request any type of waivers that will allow us to have a lengthening time for these mandated testings? And can there be a possible suspension of some of the testing?
I've been on several webinars with DPI since the end of last week, and I have not heard a lot of conversation in regards to testing and, and what type of requirements or deadlines might be extended in regards to calendars. I think everyone is trying to deal with this two-week period at this point, and what might come beyond, but have not heard a lot of conversation about testing at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Have we considered taking food out on the buses for some that may not have cars or vehicles?
Actually, that's under consideration for Phase 2 of this program. Each of these programs, we believe, is being built with the opportunity to expand them as necessary. And we've had several discussions about bus delivery for that. And our Transportation Department, Reece Cagle and Chris McNeil, working with Amanda Cagle and our senior staff, have already mapped out, literally mapped out some opportunities for that.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Questions? To sum up, talking about how it changes from hour to hour, today, when it was announced that dine-in was closed for all restaurants in North Carolina, it was a person, our senior staff, who realized then, "Well, we need to make sure we have enough of our own takeout trays to continue this program." So again, our senior staff jumped in there, and tried to figure out, "How can we solve this problem? Because we don't want a shortage of our own to serve meals." this problem because we don't want a shortage of our own to serve meals when supplies are being bought up?
And I always get in dangerous territory when I start naming people, but Susan Britt and administrative staff and everybody that has been involved, I know I probably left somebody out, so I apologize.
I can remember hearing a conversation, they was, that's how my church does it and that's how they use it and that kind of thing.
That's exactly right.
That kind, those kind of comments and those kind of ideas is what keeps our school system moving forward. Again, there's a lot of moving parts and I think it goes back to what we always say is it was best for our students and is that what's safest for our students and including that, students as also our staff and faculty. With that, I bring up one more thing that I want to speak about and that is, we're scheduled for a budget meeting this Thursday and following Monday. I've talked to several of the school government and different people and with the new CDC guidelines of no more than ten in a meeting, makes it kind of hard for us. At this time, I want to say it's still tentative plan. I want to make sure that we give everything we can and keep moving as a board and moving as a government to keep things moving forward, but I don't want to risk the lives of those up here and those in the audience and all around either. So, working through a plan because one fear, if we were to hold our budget meeting at the Hans Education building like we're planning to and someone came down with the virus, there goes, that building is unsuitable safe until we get it clean and that will slow our response down and everything else. So I don't want to make any rushed judgments. Like I said, just be looking for email and text messages and calls from me and senior staff about tentative on Thursday. Again, it changes every minute because even if by Thursday, it could be lower than ten. So, we are moving forward. Again, at this point, it's tentative and I will let you know, especially the building place, because I don't want to lose our Hans Education building where senior staff is needed to be to work out these details and other things. Questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions. One alibi in reference to the people who's serving the food, are we having the people who's handing out the food know the going through the safety precautions, the gloves and stuff like that? Is any of the staff being tested or are they just told, hey, if you feel like you got signs and symptoms, maybe you should get tested? I mean, what's the criteria for that?
Actually, they're being tested before they prepare the food or hand food out and Mary Holly Oates is taking care of that in conjunction with the Health Department.
And my very last question is, what can we as a board do to help? I know my mission trip just got canceled for tomorrow and so, I mean, I've got a whole week. We've got backpacks for kids and things like that. Is there something that individuals on the board that we can do to help as far as during this part of the crisis, other than reassuring the community and trying to not cause a panic with the children?
As a board, I think the biggest thing we can do, and I've learned this in the last few days, and I don't want to say stay out of the way, but we need to make sure we don't slow the process down as well. As a board, I think we can just continue working together. If we want to volunteer and serve at some of these places, as long as it's, Mary Holly Oates feels that's safe and we're not contributing or making it worse for anybody, I have no problem with that. But again, she's the expert when it comes to that. I want to ask kind of a question, maybe a statement to clarify, when you say tested, you mean fever and symptoms? You don't mean, do you mean tested for the virus altogether? When you said Mary Holly Oates was going to test each volunteer, are we testing for symptoms or are we actually testing for the virus at that point? Because I think that may be-
Health symptoms.
Health symptoms, that's right.
So they're being screened, not tested?
Screen, my apologies.
I wanted to make sure we cleared that up because that could, people are going to, you're going to be screened when you get there and your name and everything is going to be taken down. So if, in case something happens, we can trace it back and continue to flatten this curve and solve this problem.
My apologies for misunderstanding your question.
No, you're, so, any other questions or comments? At this time, I actually, and I've spoke to each of the committee chairs, I would actually lighten, we didn't have a policy meeting, we didn't have a CNI meeting, correct?
That's correct.
I don't want to waste any more time on that. If we can, I want to bypass committee reports and be right on to our consent agenda. At that, at this moment, is there approval for our consent agenda as approved?
Mr. Chairman, I move that consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. McCracken.
Mr. Chairman, the Lee County Board of Education Policy Committee recommends the following policy for second reading, Policy forty-two forty dash seventy-three twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety.
Do we have any discussion concerning the second reading of those policies? Hearing or seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
It's going to firm committee, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to approve the policies as presented?
So moved.
Needing no second, all in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving down to new business, we have budget amendments. Do you have those for review? At this time, I open the floor for any discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question in reference to the Washington trip. Is that still a go? I was just looking at some of the high-dollar items when we have, when we start doing budget amendments.
Talking about Colosco trip?
Procurement zero thirty-four.
At this, at this time, all trips have been suspended, so we will have to check and see, I believe that the necessary things in place in case they have to cancel that trip, insurance, et cetera. Is that correct?
Parents were given the option to purchase the insurance, but I do believe that the very, very high percentage of the money did-
She has, yes, she has, so.
So we don't need this increase or we do?
Well, the money's been collected, so we need to appropriate it, but we might be Greek on the net, like-
So we're just approving collecting the money is what we're doing? If there's no other discussion, I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the budget amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the budget amendment as presented, signal saying aye?
Aye.
All the opposed, like sign? Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number two, the resolution that you have before you tonight. With the closure of the school for at least two weeks, it's important to continue our student learning to comply with the Department of Public Instruction directive to develop a long-term distant learning program. A laptop distribution for students in grades three through twelve who do not have access to a device at home begins on Monday. With the purchase of these additional laptops, we will supply the need during the coronavirus closure and support the refresh program once school resumes as well. Yes, sir?
Do you need a motion second?
So at this time, is there any discussion?
And if I may, if I may add one thing, that we're literally doing this as we're going through the afternoon, this would be for a hundred thousand dollars for laptop program and approximately four hundred and forty laptops. And it would be, I've worked very closely with Kelly over the last couple of days, ensures me we have the funds to support this and also would support laptops for students once we begin our directive from the Department of Public Instruction. We also know that we could get the laptops here in a very short amount of time, meaning just a few days.
I'd also like to point out, this is for laptops and any pertinent technology that may be needed to ensure that they have access to the internet.
So that includes hotspots?
Yes, we're in the process of moving hotspots around actually right now that we have, but there might be a few where we might have to purchase some additional things, but that would be included in that one hundred thousand as well. Forgive me for not putting the one hundred thousand on there, but we just, we ran out of time.
Hotspots plus a lot of our Wi-Fi leaks from the building? If you're ever in the parking lot of drop out, you'll notice that, which is another, this is a good thing for this, but not all students can get here or get to a school where that would be occurring. When you can't have students in the classroom, you got to find a way to get the classroom to them. We got to figure out how to educate.
And just so you know, earlier this week, I purchased another, I purchased up to my purchasing authority, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, some other laptops as well. So this would, bless you. So this would, this would provide us with certainly a enhanced set of laptops to provide for students starting Monday and Tuesday.
There will be a process for them to be checked out, as he noted earlier, and track kept of, of who has what and that kind of thing and they'll only be signed out to those who are a point of contact for that student. We understand the need to take care of not only taxpayer dollars, but also our equipment and that has not been forgotten through this whole process as well. If there is no concerns, questions, or issues, I will entertain a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education authorize the superintendent to purchase up to one hundred thousand dollars of laptops or other pertinent technology equipment for use during the coronavirus closure and to support the laptop refresh program once school resumes a normal schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of this, all in favor of the motion, signal saying aye?
Aye.
All the opposed, like sign? Thank you. And Lee County Board of Education, that is the first way you can help through this whole process, is that right there? So, moving along, I don't see any other new business. I would just like to, before we move into closed session, again, thank our senior staff, our administrative staff, everyone who has worked hard on this and ensures that we're doing what we can for our children and for our community because decisions that are made, that we've made up here tonight and for, and through our central office, not only ensure that education continues, but in course affect the safety of our community, we want to make sure that we do our part in limiting the spread of this as much as possible. At this point, I will entertain a motion to close.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is not privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGS Section one four three dash three one eight point one one A-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you and everyone stay six foot apart. At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education back to order. Continuing with our new business, is there a motion for personnel?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the human resources report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor of the personnel report as presented, signal saying aye?
Aye.
All the opposed, like sign? Our personnel report stands approved. At this time, I would just like to remind everyone in our community to please stay safe and follow our website, our Facebook page, our social media for any updates. This is an ever-changing crisis and we are doing our best to get the best information out there to you. Just pray for everyone involved in this and pray that we can get through this crisis together and continue on with our normal lives. Once again, thank all our staff and at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you.